Imperial Planning Commission Order six thirty seven. Have a roll call please.
Commissioner Rivera? Not present. Commissioner Harvey? Not present. Commissioner Aba?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Mendoza?
Here.
Chairman Hamerens?
Here. This time we all stand and pledge allegiance. Ready to begin.
I'd like to see the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of British Commons, one nation, one country. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. All right, public appearances. B one, matter's not appearing on the agenda.
If I, if I can, Chairman, um, under adjustments to the agenda, we will be pulling item C one. For the record.
Um.
The minute.
The minutes, very good. Thank you. B one, matter's not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the planning commission concerning any item not appearing on the agenda and within the commission's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairperson, and at that time state your name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the commission in writing. Is there anybody here this evening that has anything they wish to bring to us that is not currently on the agenda? I don't see any hands, okay. B two, matters appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the planning commission, commission concerning any items appearing on the agenda within the commission's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairperson, and at that time state your name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the commission in writing. Now then, who do we have here on the, or the agenda items? Show your hands. Anybody, so, we have two items. One concerning the, um, barbecue stand? And another one concerning, uh, Victoria Ranch. Is there anybody here in, we know you're for it. Anybody here in opposition to the barbecue stand? Anybody, who here is for the Victoria Ranch? Anybody here in opposition to Victoria Ranch? So all, all fours know against, okay, very good, thank you. All right, consent calendar's been pulled. So we're gonna move on to D one. I'm gonna open the, well, I'm gonna read this then I'll open it. Uh, subject, continue public hearing, discussion, action, conditional use permit, C U P twenty-two dash zero three, to allow the onset sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages and onsite live entertainment in an existing restaurant within a neighborhood commercial zone located at two nine seven South Imperial Avenue, A P N number zero six four dash one zero three, dash zero zero five. I'm gonna open up a public hearing at this time, it is a continuation from last week, which we were unable to fulfill this due to a failure of a quorum. So at this time, I'm gonna ask the staff if there's any additional staff report information that we need on this. If there's nothing else, that's okay.
Some of the letter was included in the staff report, and there was an email delivered today.
Okay, and in opposition? Okay, I would like, at this time, I'd like any opposition material read into the record.
I'll read the letter.
Thank you.
Letter states, and this is Diane Johnson, oh three, five South Imperial Avenue. Dear Mr. Morita, Morita, it has been brought to my attention that the Salt Cedar Barbecue has applied for a conditional use permit for their location at two ninety-seven South Imperial Avenue. The applicant is requesting this permit to allow for the onsite sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages and onsite live entertainment. The Salt Cedar Barbecue is located directly across the street from our townhouses at three oh three and three oh five South Imperial Avenue. While it is understood that the serving of alcoholic beverages increases revenue to not only the proprietor, but to the city as well, we thus have no objections to its serving of them with two conditions. One, only wine and/or beer to be served, and two, these two classes of alcoholic beverages may only be purchased with a food order. As presented, we are not in favor of the onsite live entertainment. Live onsite entertainment will be a detriment to the neighborhood and its quality of life. This type of entertainment will directly and negatively impact my tenants' peace and quiet enjoyment, to which they are entitled in a residentially zoned property. Their home's tranquility will very likely be lost to loud voices trying to talk over louder music. Thus, as such, we are against any type of onsite live entertainment. Thank you for your considerate time and consideration, Diane Johnson.
And that's the letter we got last week?
Correct.
And you said there was an email today?
In addition to that, the, uh, Diane Johnson is requesting the city to provide sound, uh, noise attenuation to mitigate the, and protect the tenants from the internal noise generated from the onsite entertainment. Um, this, um, several suggestions we come to her mind are sound attenuation fencing set at a proper height and parkway trees planted on both sides of West Sixth Street.
Mr. Chairman, just to provide some context to the email, um, the, the rest of the email, which isn't really relevant to those conditions that Mr. Moore just referred to. She, she was not present for the last meeting and wasn't, was not aware that the, um, matter was continued to this meeting. She, she read something which led her to believe that this body approved, um, the, uh, uh, conditional use permit as applied for without any conditions. And so, th- tho- those mitigation measures that Mr. Moore just referred to was her comment and kind of, well, okay. Uh, as a way to kind of mitigate the mistake you just made by granting the live music, please consider these, uh, mitigation measures. So I think she would, the, the content of her July thirteenth letter was still applied. She would be opposed to the live entertainment, and then, and then believing that it was approved. That, that, those are the me- measures she would recommend.
Okay. Throw down, soundproof fencing and then trees, basically is what you said, or some kind of shrub?
Correct.
Tree. And when we had a similar request for this property to be used in a similar fashion a year ago, she made no comment at all.
But if you call last time, the application was just for an acu- bar. This time they're-
Right, but they were also gonna be a, a beer or distillery.
There's, we, we, we have the applicant here as well, um, you can answer those specific-
Oh yeah, yeah, I know, I'm just discussing last year's. So at this time, um, sir, if you wanna step up and say anything further, or, or, uh?
We do have a commissioner here that wasn't here last week, so.
Yes. So you gotta kind of have to start over.
Last of two thousand. Um, as far as my neighbor's concerns, uh, like I was telling Yvonne, they're totally warranted, I get it. You know, she doesn't know me, she doesn't know what type of business I'm bringing in here. There has been a couple events that weren't set up the way that I would, that were close to the property and not necessarily controlled by me, and so that could have been a concern for her, that maybe this is what it's gonna be, and, and, you know, this is what they're bringing to the neighborhood. With my changes that I'm trying to make, like the, uh, the new proposed stage area, well, this is actually on Sixth Street across from, from the apartments, that's gonna have privacy fencing, um, there, so that should help, and that gate there that is, is, uh, somewhat ajar is also just gonna be used for emergency purposes only, so it won't be an entrance normally. This is just their parking. So, this is actually, Sixth Street is behind this photo, and the proposed stage, proposed small stage should be, will be in this area. I'm also not proposing that I have live music every night, tilt in on the dot, uh, you know, electric punk rock metal stuff playing. I want there to be folk bands, local artists, playing when we're serving barbecue on the weekends. I don't want any problems with my neighbors with the police or anything, you know, I'd be happy to work with the neighbor directly, it would not be a problem for me. This is just, you know, part of the vision that I see for my barbecue restaurant that I'm trying to open here in Imperial. Sure.
The breadth of the type of entertainment you're gonna provide. I wouldn't wanna hear, uh, met- heavy metal if I live just across the street.
It's, it's understandable, no, and, and we want it to be a place for people to showcase their talent, but we also understand that it's a restaurant, people are gonna be sitting there with their families eating. Uh, you know, there, there would be no purpose to have a show like that. You know, to have a band of that, you know, noise level or, or annoyance, uh, play. You know, it's not in my interest either as a business owner, what I'm trying to do.
Height of your-
Um, I'm not sure.
What you can do. Item minimum.
Um, I guess, yeah.
Sound from traveling.
Yeah, I, I guess there on that, here, let me pull that slide back up. Yeah, I guess here on the, um, east wall before the gate, um, which would be pretty close to the stage area, I could, I could put something at least to, to keep the noise going, uh, north. Uh, but again, you know, I, I don't want the noise level to be high either. You know, I'm, I'm okay with acoustic sets, the only thing is sometimes you need a microphone to get some feedback, and, I mean, not feedback, uh, uh, some effects or whatever the singer might want for that, that type of music, and it just rounds everything out. Um, but as far as like what would actually work, I couldn't tell you, I'm not an audio engineer, you know, I, I, I wouldn't know exactly what would be the easiest way to, to work it out in, in this situation, in this scenario, but.
Important that-
Of course.
Doesn't that mean that you can't have this opportunity for you?
Absolutely.
My experience is, I have a place in downtown Little Italy, and when they put in, uh, some, it's totally changed since I bought it twenty years ago.
I bet.
Okay, and, um, it was still Little Italy then. Um, they put in, and, and the big thing is about, uh, it's not only the noise from the venue, but also with people leaving that speak loud, and, um, sometimes their voices carry, and if people happen to have their windows open, which they might in the wintertime fall, versus, um, in the summer, um, then you will get response, and it may be negative. So you just need to be aware, I probably will have employees to watch who's walking around when they leave your facility, that they're,
Of course.
That they're not, because you don't want the liability if they're, they get into an accident, because they have consumed too much.
Right, yeah, and, yeah, and, and from what I've read already from the A B C application I filled out, you know, they're obviously very strict on what they tell you, you can, you can't do, and when you can, you know, so I, I, I understand the situation, I know how important it is, you know. Uh, I don't, I mean, like I said, I'm from here, I'm not trying to, you know, they're my neighbors too, I live a few blocks away.
Okay.
You know what I mean, it's not, you know, I'm not trying to get over on anyone, you know.
And people who speak positively, even if they never, don't frequent, they're across the street.
Right.
They will advertise for you.
Absolutely, and like I said, possibly because of previous events, they might be expecting something, but I can guarantee you that I'll do everything I can to mitigate this, the, the noise level, and any type of lowering issues or anything like that that they would be concerned with.
Talked a lot about the apartments that are south of it, but my, one of my concern is the apartment that's west of it. The apartment complex that's west of it, and, I mean, the way that you're proposing the stage to be set up, it's gonna be facing north, so the sound will be traveling north, while the, uh, the Ms. Johnson's apartment complex is south of it. But you're gonna be leaving open the apartment complex that's west of it, is there anything to try and mitigate that sound from traveling over there?
There's actually a, a, a building with other businesses inside my lot, um, that runs the whole length of that, that apartment complex. There is one further, uh, maybe two hundred yards, but at that point, they're pretty close to the, to my next neighbor, which is the, the Veterans Hall there. Um, it's, you know, I guess I could get you photos if you needed them, but, you know, they're not that close, and we, we haven't had complaints from them, so I don't know if it's an issue. And like I said, anything we've already done, what we're gonna do is gonna be less, because, you know, a couple of, of those events, the bands were playing too loud, no one was watching, you know, I was inside cooking and not, it wasn't my event completely, I wasn't in control, so, you know.
Or we had talked last week about the different noise levels, that how this is village center, so it's got a higher decibel level than the residential across the street or next door to it have. Is there a way that we can include in the C U P where the noise level at the point it reaches those apartment complexes must be what is acceptable for an apartment complex or for a family or residential area?
Element, yes. I would probably be able to test that. I have a friend that, that's got quite a bit of audio equipment, we can probably figure out where we need to be, and if there's gonna be any problems, you know.
Because that's my concern, is, we, we have a noise element that says here in a residential area, this is as loud as it should be. But just because you're located in a village center, uh, they need to be able, they should be able to expect that their noise level is not gonna be higher than the,
Yeah, and I-
Than they're allowed to create.
And I, yes, and I am on the cusp, so I understand that I'm like, I'm right on the cutoff, and I'm doing what I can, um, besides, you know, anything that I, you know, I haven't, I haven't thought about as far as, you know, sound blocks or anything, but I, you know, like I said, I don't know anything about that, you know, but.
Funny to say, it was like sixty-five for resident, seventy for-
Sixty for single family and sixty-five for multifamily, correct.
Oh, if, but at the point the noise reaches that multifamily, if it's at sixty-five, then that's what they, they, they're, that's what they're expecting, yeah, like it's acceptable for them anyway.
Correct.
And what are your thoughts on Ms. Johnson's recommendations of, uh, the sound barriers on the fence and the trees and the-
For one, it seems like overkill. Um, for two, I think it would be more of a, of a visual nuisance, or an eyesore. Uh, those fences, you're talking a six to eight foot fence blocking the whole front of their complex and the whole front of the side of, uh, of, of my building, which also other businesses have, their businesses have, basically blocking their businesses. Um, it just seems unnecessary, you know, I'm trying to stay within limits and not bother anyone, I don't see the reason to go any further.
And is it in the C U P, you'd provided a drawing of where the proposed stage was gonna be and the way that it's facing, is it in the C U P that that's where it will be kept and?
Uh, I, I have, uh, my speech that I gave last time, I have it in PDF form, and it does say it in there, I could, we could put it into the record if that's-
I'm, I'm more worried about it being in the C U P where we can say the stage will be located here and will face this direction.
Gotcha.
So that, because this, the C U P, if I'm not mistaken, it's binding to the property, it will, it can continue on, if you sell, it continues on to the next person, and while you may have, you know, the good intent of putting a stage here and protecting the neighbors, if we approve it without putting that condition in, your next person that it's assigned to, they can just decide to, to, to the stage facing right towards Ms. Johnson's apartment complex, if it's not part of that C U P.
Just a, a few suggestions, if you look at item number three, that addresses the noise element, if you wanted to make an adjustment to that, to the sixty-five, and then possibly at the end of three, you could a- address the stage, and you can reference the slide. But I do recommend if you want it to be binding, it should be written, and you should be clear about what sentences to add. There's two sections, I think three is the time and the, the sound, and so I, I do believe that would be good, but you could certainly review it and put it anywhere or add a new provision.
Just looking very quickly at the conditions, I see I, item nine references s- the stage, doesn't, but doesn't have its ori- doesn't refer to its orientation.
Facing.
Right. Um, far as the sound issue, since you're gonna be on the north side of the building, you've got an entirely thick building to absorb a lot of it, and as long as your speakers weren't way up towards the top of the building, it should keep the bulk of the sound going north. Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't, I, I don't see where, unless your band goes nuts, I don't see where it could be. I don't see where that's a huge issue, uh, myself, having dealt with stuff like that long ago. And I'm not a big fan of people dictating a business on how many drinks they can sell to somebody, when they're trying to run a business. So, that's just my feeling.
I'd like to, I agree with that, I, they, I know that this application is for beer and wine, so, um, the first item, Ms. Johnson's letter is being addressed, the concern I have with going into, oh, you can't sell alcohol unless they're eating, you are providing entertainment until late at night, and as we've discussed last week, you, you produce a certain amount of food product, when it's done, you're done. And by not allowing the entertainment to continue and the alcohol to continue, it's basically shutting your business down when the food's gone. So, I think we're covered in here that you can't serve alcohol to intoxicated persons. So, uh, but-
Maybe see as well.
Yeah. And I, I just, I disagree with saying you can't have alcohol unless you're eating, because I mean, there's times where some people may wa- mu- wanna go there to eat, they just wanna go for the entertainment, and you're, you're prohibiting them from doing that.
States where bars could stay open unless they were serving food. So that's kinda came up with potato chips and popcorn. That's another control thing. So I think the owner wants to make sure he doesn't have any luck. He'll make sure that you don't wanna lose.
Exactly, yeah, I'm trying to build something here, something real, you know.
Don't wanna put more shovels on him.
Well, if we don't. Uh, but this is sad.
So if the only thing we add right now would be to dictate that the stage equipment has to be on the north side of the building facing north. And if we have a noise issue complaint down the road, uh, that's substantial enough to be brought back to us, at that time, we could say you wanna stay in business, we gotta modify the C U P, correct?
Not, no.
Or, or what would be, no, I'm asking what-
We're approving the C U P now.
Um, the, yeah.
Becomes a nuisance at that point.
Unless it's a nuisance, but if, for instance, the C U P says you can be at a sound level of a hundred, and they're within that sound level, you can't just bring him back in. If he went to a hundred and five, you could, so you want to put the standards in here now rather than, um, doing it later, because you-
You already have a noise ordinance.
You do, you do. Correct.
So putting it in here just says repeating what's already on the books.
Well, mine was a little bit different in that, that this business is located within a village center, and it has its designated noise level. Then right at next door and right across the street is a residential area that has a different sound level. My comment was, any noise that this business, uh, produces, once it reaches that apartment complex, the decibels must be what is part of that residential area, it can't be higher than what the residential decibel level is. Because, I mean, we do have a noise, noise ordinance that says, you're in this residential area, this is the sound level. As long as we're keeping what they're hearing in their area at that sound level, then we're following, to me, we're following the, the noise ordinance. But the, 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 the weird thing that we have going on is this, these two different noise levels right next door to each other. And I'm just saying, at the noise he's producing, by the time it gets to this apartment complex, it needs to be at what is allowed in that car- apartment complex. Uh, uh, per the ordinance, or the, the noise element.
Add to that, wouldn't, wouldn't that be the same thing as if I was in the other area? Already as if my business was in the next area? Isn't that kind of the same thing?
Well, no, because the reason being is by, you're in Village Commercial, you can have your decibels up to, uh, seventy?
Okay.
Yeah, you can have up to seventy.
Here, it doesn't matter because it's a border, okay.
You're, you're at seventy, and right next door, they're at sixty-five. By the time your noise gets to their building, it needs to be at sixty-five, because that's what's allowed there. Just because you're allowed to have seventy, it can't, I don't want it being seventy once it gets to them, it needs to be at the level that's allowed in that residential area.
So they're restricted to sixty-five?
They, they can produce it at seventy, but by the time that sound travels to that apartment complex, it needs to have reduced to sixty-five.
Saying that if we put it in the C U P at sixty-five, there's no way he can, because we're talking five decibels. It's not a huge amount.
But I think that's also restricting the purpose of the noise element, I mean, we, it, as long as, on the, on his property, I don't care that it's at seventy, but once that noise travels to the, the residential, I think it needs to be at the residential level, once it gets there at sixty-five.
Right, but every, anything that affect noise, too much humidity will change the noise, the direction of the wind will change the way noise travels. The way, I mean, there's a lot of variables that could make something loud in one spot one day and not loud the next spot another day. Some days, a train going by my house sounds like it's literally right, right in front of my house. Other days, it sounds like it's a quarter mile away, neither which is correct, but that's the way sound behaves, it's based on a lot of, there's a lot of factors, and we're, we're starting to split hairs here beyond, uh, reason, and I think most of our, uh, areas that are zoned like this are surrounded by apartment complexes, isn't how the buffer system works to some degree, so there's always gonna be somebody that's not gonna be completely happy. So that's my only suggestion, was if we restricted him to the sixty-five, then there's no way it would be, because it would be sixty, we'll say when they got there, but I'm just suggesting it, I'm not.
Aaron, just, just a couple of comments. Th- th- this whole area, the area to the south of, of this property is also Village Commercial. So the zoning is the same, I get the fa- I get your comment with respect to the fact that the uses are different, but for zoning purposes, it's the same, um, and, and-
The property to the west might not be in the Village Commercial?
With the, certainly the property to the south is vi- Village Commercial.
And, uh, uh, for all of this, I'm actually, I'm not worried about the property to the south, I'm worried about the ones to the west, because the south, you do have that building, and you have the distance, and you have the sound travel, you know, facing the other direction. I'm more worried about the property to the left and, I mean, to the west than I am to the property to the south.
So, um, also, I heard reference made to a noise ordinance. It's my understanding, we don't have a specific noise ordinance, what we do have is a noise element to our general plan, and, and I, and I gather that that contains some standards. I misspoke. And now, I, I would-
I said, um, ordinance do.
I would certainly take Mr. Moore's recommendation or city attorney's recommendation. My thought as I sit here is that it would be better, uh, because now if you look at condition three, it has a, it has a reference to the noise element. Uh, but if you're looking at this, y- you don't know what that means, does it mean sixty-five at, to, uh, at a residential, seventy at a, at this use? And so, I, uh, if, if indeed you're interested in limiting deci- or, or, uh, looking at decibel levels, I would specify, so that everybody knows, uh, there's a, I, and I get what Chairman Ha- Hamerens is saying about how sound behaves and the variables associated with what you hear, uh, but I, I think, um, my sense would be that we would be, uh, we'd be better, i- if the noise element to the general plan does not have sp- speci- very specific sta- If if the noise element to the general plan does not have sp- speci- very specific standards. Uh a- all the more reason I would think that we would wanna have something in these conditions so that. The applicant knows, the neighbors know, city knows, our our enforcement people know, this is what, this is what the rules are.
Right, but I mean, right here in condition three, which is brought up, if complaints arise, the city of Imperial may impose noise pollution mitigation measures on the business. So right there, we're giving ourselves a in and that and the opportunity, if there are complaints, to step in and say. We gotta fix this.
Potentially, but I think that gets us back to Ms. Turner's comment about the fact that. If if it's if if it's depending on the magnitude of it, we could, we could. Get in a disagreement, if you will, about whether or not. This condition is being violated, if we have some. Standard to look at, I think we're better off, as opposed to, so. If complaints arise, okay, so if we get, is it one complaint, ten complaints? So if complaints arise, say we get, we do get complaints, the city comes in and now says, okay, you can't have amplified music. The the applicant or or whoever's holding the permit at that point might say that that. You're going beyond what what the circumst- and we get into an argument about something that I think we can avoid. If if we just establish a standard. And and I I I would be comfortable with just referring to the noise element. If 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 we're if we're told that the noise element has those bright lines that you were talking about in terms of residential, commercial and so forth.
So is it more clear if we just say, okay, you're not gonna go above sixty-five decibels?
I guess first. We I I I think we wanna be clear about what the noise element says and what it doesn't say.
Um so to be specific, um under the uh noise element, sixty decibels is established as deceptible outdoor noise exposure. Level for rural and single-family residential areas and sixty-five for multifamily. Apartment complexes.
Is there, is there something different for industrial and commercial?
Village centers.
So I I here's a scenario, Mr. Hammerness, and I think the the reason, eh eh let's say. We we leave leave it like it is and then the city says, okay, it's sixty-five, seventy, whatever it is, and then we get complaints. Uh and then we're gonna say, okay, well, yeah, and we refer to the noise element, the noise element says sixty-five. Uh and you're at sixty, but we're getting complaints. Are we then gonna come in and say to him, okay, our, your condition said noise element. You're at, you're at, you're at fifty, but we're getting com- complaints even though the standard is different, is higher than that. And I I think that gets us into a.
But under that, even if we had us established standard, we we said it was sixty and people complained, we'd be right back in the same boat. With that, even though it says sixty, they're still complaining.
Big deal, people complain about things every day.
Why not?
Gosh, scaronia, man, that's an Italian, it's whiner, there's plenty of people who whine, doesn't mean that they were gonna jump. If 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 the owner knows what his parameters are and it's black and white. And he's agreed to it and we've agreed to it, I think that's only being fair, it's upfront, as Mr. Marita has pointed out to us. You know, it's it's a guideline, you know, the bumpers on the road, you know? So you think you could work with sixty-five, okay, work with sixty-five, we should put the words in there.
Hardly, uh and um and that would be in line three. Worked that in there and then the other one was. Yeah, it's in nine, I believe.
And it is much easier for an applicant to come back with these specific standards and say, could we adjust them than it is to do it the other way, so.
Okay, so. Don't necessarily leave, but sometimes you end up getting asked more questions, but this time I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this, I think. Absolutely, uh it's set level, all right, now, our discussion, which I think we pretty much already handled, so. Is there anything else or do we wanna put this together into a uh proposal or amend? Proposal to change the CUP so we can pass it, I'm the the word escapes me.
Oh, what you what you could.
Motion, that's the one I'm looking for, yes.
And and if you match the agenda, um as it's listed on on your agenda approval of the resolution, read that as your motion, but say with two changes. One to three, one to nine, and explain what they are briefly.
Okay, so you wanna try or do you want me to try it? Approval of res- I'll make a motion to approve resolution PC twenty dash or twenty twenty-two dash four. For the approval of conditional use permit twenty-two zero-three. Um with the two changes, first one for item number three, where we will add a limitation of sixty-five decibels on the sound. And on number nine, well, we will put the caveat that the stage must be located on the north side of the building facing northward.
That's perfect. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded in, over the vote.
Motion passes three zero.
Motion passes. You're in business, sir. All right, everybody, we're gonna take.
When are you reopening? Good cool time, Alexis, can we do our uh friends meeting there on Thursday?
As of right now, October twenty-ninth.
Okay, everybody, I'm gonna take a five-minute break, cause I need to go to the bathroom.
A recess? We look forward to trying that barbecue.
Um the proposed amendment to the Victoria Ranch, uh it only consists in a zoning designation for just unit four B. The overall footprint of the um talent map will remain the same as uh you can see in in one of your exhibits. Uh as part of your package, the proposed changes to the re- in revisions are. Related to the sign facing an internal circulation of the proposed unit four B. The overall housing uh units approved on the original turning map was a thousand two hundred seventy-nine. And with this change, it will take it up to a thousand three hundred and eleven. Uh only resulting in thirty-two additional units, this proposed modification, i- it is only a two-point-four percent increase in density. The four B, as provided in your package, um have has a hundred and two units proposed. The sequent document. Was reviewed from two thousand and three, um was reviewed by staff and still retains adequate information value to the analysis. And the proposed revision will not affect a change in the original findings and mitigation measures and will continue to be enforced. Uh staff recommends to uh approve the item and I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Have any question? Welcome to come up this time and present your uh proposal, sir.
Uh Tori Leslie, uh one seven nine Sylvia Court, hearing Imperial, um what do you wanna know?
Is the change in the housing and stuff, is it it just you, you're trying to fit more units on there or was there a reason for the change in the lot size and the?
We've been very successful with the Cambria product and. Uh at this time, we're looking at, you know, maybe a slowdown in housing because of interest rates and we wanna keep. Um our product in the affordable range and not do the the giant homes that were planned for that area. There was only si- thirty-six lots planned, so that would have been, you know, homes that are in the. Five hundred to six hundred thousand dollar range and just felt like that's not uh to, this time is not a good time to be doing something like that. Yeah, and we've been very successful, there's two hundred and fifty-plus homes, uh just the Cambria product that we've built so far. In in your city.
Uh Michelle Hollinger, uh Victoria Homes, one seven nine Sylvia Court. I'd just like to add uh to what my brother said, even though we have seen um with the interest rates possible slowdown. We also are possibly expecting a housing crisis, so. We have to look at that as well going, do we do large lots? Or do we maybe do what we do best and know that this product works? And build what works and know that we can um build affordable housing. And be able to sell even if the interest rate goes up. Or have more units to sell if we have the housing crisis. So I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
She's more of the marketing side, I'm the construction guy.
Yeah, I would have never guessed that.
Brother sister team, not too bad, huh?
Okay, so you're referring to the Cambria area, so you're actually building houses on lots this small?
I'm sorry?
You said you successfully the Cambria.
Yes, yes, uh it's it's our product name.
Okay.
It's the name of the project.
Well, I was trying to think, maybe I've missed something, um and you're building houses on lots this small?
Yes.
And where's that at?
Mr. Chairman, if in your package, if you take a take a look at the second page, we have a project location map. Uh north of that.
No, I understand where it is for this one, I'm asking where he's built other.
Correct, north of this one, uh where it says project location, north of that, that's where he's building those homes. Uh yes, uh we're, you're almost at the end of.
The phase thirteen is in the uh what uh stucco dry and drywall stage, cabinetry is being installed and. Uh flatwork is going in, driveways, that kinda thing, so that's the end of uh. What I have on the book so far, this would be the next Cambria product, so I'm kind of in a. You know, it's gonna be a lag in, you know, product because I still have to go through a final map process after hopefully we get this approved. So I still have quite a bit of work to do before I can break ground, so I'm just kinda looking at a a big gap in construction, really.
Saying in this subdivision already.
Oh, yeah.
Three thousand square foot lots.
Yeah, they 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 come out to be thirty-two something for the standard lot.
How's that working for the driveways, cause I was looking, I actually had some setback questions on that.
We're just, we're just asking for the same setbacks as we did in uh Cambria three project, that's directly to the north of. VR four B.
That project already has the same setbacks listed in exhibit A, page one. Front setback area house, living area house, ten feet minimum.
Yes, I believe that's exactly, we we're just asking for exactly the same we have in VR six A.
I look at these and I'm like, and I wish I had known that these were built over, some of these were over there, cause I would have liked to have gone and looked at them. Today, I I well, if I'd realized there were hous- houses on this side, I would have been over there looking at them today, cause I've been around a lot of places looking at stuff today.
Look at them anyway, the mouth, she decorated.
Well, I just see, you know, fifteen-foot minimum setback for the garage, so that's fifteen feet to the street, to the curb, to the sidewalk, what would that be?
The property line.
Property line. And where are we measuring the property line at on the, cause I know sometimes they're saying it's setback off the street four feet, so I'm asking.
This one is a li-. Ten feet, five feet from the end of the sidewalk towards your house. That's usually where the property.
Oh, it's five feet plus this fifteen, so that's twenty feet.
Yes, so fifteen feet is to the property line.
Eh, expression doesn't look like it's quite.
Ten feet face the curb, that's P O, and then there, then there's fifteen feet. So it's, so it's twenty-five from face the curb to garage.
Okay, so, cause I'm looking at this going like fifteen feet to the. Okay, so because I'm looking at this going like fifteen feet to the from the garage and I'm thinking to the street. I'm thinking, okay, my truck's eighteen feet. Better than fit.
And that's, and I think that's the confusion. I mean, the we have one property at Mayfield and that was a ten feet, I believe it was ten, ten to twelve feet setback in the garage and then, you know, some of the cars are not able to feed there and they're crushing to the side.
Well, that's why I wanted to ask these questions about the setbacks because they concern me. But understanding what you're that's why I want to know where the line starts. So. And how big is the footprint? Because I notice all these houses are two-story houses.
Yes.
So they have a little smaller footprint on the lot than a single-story house would have.
Correct.
Can you give me a rough, just rough?
Eight hundred square feet for the bottom, roughly? Six, yeah.
So eighty by eighty or rough something, if you want to make it a box?
It's it's sort of a box, more like an L-shaped.
Right. And then the backyard? Setback again, I see living area ten feet. But again, there's property line or that property line goes to the fence.
Usually a property line.
And the back goes to the fence. It's not in the middle of the yard.
No.
So that's ten feet.
That's a minimum. These yards are more like fifteen to twenty or twenty-five feet. Depends on what house is put on which lot.
By changing, the changes you're requesting be four A and now? Is it making the houses, I know we're shrinking the lot size? Are we shrinking the house sizes, the proposed house sizes, or are the lots just going to be more covered than?
The lots, the lots will be the same size as what the approved project that I'm building in now. The same size, everything would be exactly the same, same houses as well, same footprint. Little bit of a change that I believe the project has to go to two by six wall. So it'll be growing, the building we grow by inch and a half and inch and a half, so three feet or three inches. That's the only difference that's from the project I'm building now to this this new one. Interior square footage will remain the same.
I I'm just trying to understand what the 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 change. So we this four A, you'd actually originally proposed larger houses, but now because the market isn't there, you're wanting to go back to what you're already doing?
Yes.
Okay, I see.
Why not just put a smaller house on the same sized lot? Then you've got people buying a smaller, cheaper house on a little bit nicer lot.
I'll have to charge quite a bit of money for that land because the streets, you know, the street has to be still be put there. You're dividing the street amongst littler pieces of property or the offsite cost versus a much bigger piece of property. So you can't build a an affordable house with a big lot. Infrastructure, the longer the lot, the longer the street, the longer the curb and gutter, everything goes up.
Well, I mean, I was on the planning commission when your other section was approved. And that and as far as affordable housing goes, there's none of this that's affordable. None of it's been affordable for a long time. Anybody tells me, oh, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's affordable houses. That's quarter of a million dollars. That's not affordable. It's that's a joke.
Do our best.
I'm not blaming you. I'm just saying. I'm just saying that it's 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 so when you're and I look at these little lots now and I and I'm like appalled because I'm like, you're going to raise your, put your family in a fifteen-foot in your backyard and little tiny, I mean, it just turns my stomach that we're doing this on the name of cheaper housing and then the end of the day, it's not really cheaper. But, you know, you've already been building them already. So I guess that cow's out of the barn on that one. So, okay, I'm done. Anybody else have any questions or any where I close public hearing on this? Oh, I did open public hearing.
Seven seven, okay.
I did. I have cheat notes here. Keep me in, keep me in line now. Anyway, yes, you said you hadn't. Oh, yeah, absolutely. We just closed it. No, go ahead.
This has been my experience. Just want to share. I have friends who are from San Diego and that complaint was there's no houses. And then when they did find Imperial, yes, the lots are smaller than wildflower, but there's fifteen thousand square foot lots. But the point is people want to have their own little castle. And reality is we're done. Money's losing value every day. And they're going, they'd rather have something than nothing. Even if it's a small yard to raise your kids. These people, they they have economic skill of economics. They gotta, they gotta be able to, they got to be able to make some money in what they're doing in today's economy. And people do want houses and it's their judgment call whether it's affordable for them or not. It's not for me to tell them. They want to be in debt. There's kids who've gone to school and and a quarter million dollar in debt when they graduate and all they got is a piece of toilet paper. Can't get a job. At least here they'll have real estate and work their butt off and hopefully pay it off in thirty years. So that's my philosophy. We need houses down here.
Really noted.
Yeah, we need houses.
Okay, I think this time I'm going to close the public hearing portion for commissioners discussion. But we may ask you questions anyway, so don't run off.
We're here.
So I'm closing public hearing on D two at this time. Okay. Any CUP changes or recommendations or further discussion on this or questions? I found out what I wanted to know. I don't know, you looked really intent intensive there. I was thinking you were coming up with an amendment. Okay, then do we have a motion at this time to approve or deny PC twenty twenty-two dash zero six, APN number zero four four dash two two zero dash one zero five?
Approve the resolution recommending the city council approve planned unit development zone change and subdivision revisions to unit four B.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor? Vote, sorry. Still used to doing it the old way.
Motion passes three zero.
There we go. We've done our due diligence. Good to build a few more. All right. Oh, that's okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time and endurance.
Okay, almost done. So it's time to give commissioner reports.
Alice? Commissioner Abadi, do you have anything to report to us?
I'll just commenting there on Ayton Road where they improved the scenery on the south side, the plants are surviving and they came and trimmed and cleaned out the weeds. I was impressed on that. I'm looking forward when they do the next section, you know, because the the plants are doing well, the trees. I was really surprised. Thank you. Yeah, yes, right, right, right. Get to late September when we get the West wind.
I missed her.
Oh, I did not see. Taking a bath today.
I actually have a question. I'm, I'm well, I guess I should preserve this until I go check it again. I was going north on Clark, no, Eighth Street, which turns into P Street, crossing Ayton. There's two lanes, one goes straight and one turns right. I was in the straight lane and then it has those dots that I'm presuming you're supposed to follow. And I don't know if it was just me not paying attention or what, but to me it seemed like the dots went from being on my right side to going into the double yellow.
You're absolutely right. That's totally screwed up.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not, no, it's not an illusion. You, if you follow the dots, you end up in opposing traffic.
Yeah, if you're following the dots, they're supposed to stay on your side, but then whenever you're, you go through the intersection, they're on your right side. But then when you go into the lane, you're supposed to be all of a sudden there on your left side.
What, if you can take a note of the location and then we'll get back to you and report it and and have a have a have a briefing on it?
Yeah, I think what.
I wouldn't talk about it anymore on the record just because we didn't agendaize it if you don't mind. But yeah, we'll, we'll do it.
It's just something to bring to staff's attention that.
Perfect.
Okay, so it's not just me?
No, it's not. Um, I think I'm gonna restrain from giving a report tonight since I haven't had anything really good to talk about. Apparently, if I, I'm, I'm not sure now if I should say something because it might need to be agendized.
You were driving around today.
Um, well, I'll tell you what I am noticing more of and that's the fact that we're starting to have, I know the term is probably homeless people, but I kind of get that impression that we're starting to have some issues on Main Street with that. One lady in the shopping cart who's accosted me at least once. And I've seen her, well, accosting the air. And then another fellow who, and they seem to hover in. Well, yeah, I said, I'm not sure that's the same one I'm talking, I'm not sure there's more than, but she's in the lady with the shopping cart is a little bit concerning because she parks on the east side of the street in the morning when the sun's obviously shady and then she moves to the side over by the laundromat in the afternoon and her behavior and actions are such that I think might require looking into maybe. But I know that's we're not, this is the planning commission, but it's things like that kind of, we talk about trying to make the city look better and we have that, it doesn't help. So for food for thought.
Oh, yeah, the the situation you described is certainly, we've been made aware of it. And obviously, there's a lot of moving parts to that aspect of our society. And and we we have some tools to to try to help folks that want want help. And so we're we're trying to avail ourselves and them of those sorts of services that are available.
Yeah, just in the cities, we've done so well for so long with not really having an issue with that. Now suddenly seeing it's starting to kind of
Yeah, I.
become an issue is kind of disheartening.
I I think over the decades, the of course, courts are always involved and so you got and courts are telling us that you got to be very careful about how, what kind of behavior you're going to criminalize. And and the short answer is you being in that position, being poor by itself isn't, isn't a crime.
Point is we live in a freaking California.
I wasn't gonna go there.
I'm saying that because I, my place there in Little Lily, like I said, it's not Little Lily anymore. It's a little homeless village, okay? And they got their pee and poop and they crack, break into cars and they poop and pee in those too, right? So and can we say anything? No, because we got our legislature and our governor who wants to be president. I'm allowed to say this because it's not on the agenda. So the point is courts or how society evolves or like that, it'd be really nice to move the lady along to say, hey, there's places where we can help you, right? But you don't need to be here because we who pay the taxes are entitled to have a sidewalk we can walk on without having to tiptoe through the tulips.
I, my concern with the these individuals right now is we've got y'all collectivo getting ready to open, have their grand opening tomorrow, and that's where I always see them. And we have a new business getting ready to open and I think we need to, as a city, try and help them do the best they can. And if people aren't going to want to go to that business because they're going to be accosted by these people because they can be kind of aggressive. And to have a new business starting out with that in their front door because that one lady is always sitting right in front of that door.
Of of late, the city council did pass a couple of ordinances as city manager Marita indicated that allow us to have the tools to assist in that regard. We are also in working with the Imperial County Social Services to highlight some of the areas of those ordinances to allow us to assist and hopefully provide the resources and relocation for those individuals. But it is an ongoing process and and regardless of how we may feel or or want to assist others, there is a process in which we have to follow, but we are doing so.
And I apologize for opening that can of worms.
It's a topic that we all, just think of it. Everyone wants to live in Imperial.
We're not addressing or not, maybe we need to address it a little more quickly. But any rate.
It's an issue of being poor. I think some people choose to live like that. And others, because of their mental situation, are not able to make a hundred percent choice on their part. But it's not because they're poor, they're living on the street. Because there are charities and organizations that can help, even as county taxpayers, okay? It's not making them a criminal because they're poor. Get them off the street.
But that is, I'm, as much as it interesting it is to discuss on our time, I believe it's a little bit out of the commission's scope of influence and we'll leave it at that. So I am going to adjourn the Imperial Planning Commission at this time at seven forty-three in the evening. Thank you all.